Regularly scheduled board meeting, we'll hear, we'll have a public hearing on the superintendent's proposed 2024-2025 budget. And our first comment will come from Siobhan Russell Jones.
Peace, peace and purpose. Good evening and happy Mental Health Awareness Month. I understand this time of year, teachers, Board of Education, parents, students are going crazy in regards to the EOG. So in regards to the budget, I've been noticing since you're two years here, superintendent, since 2019, your contract ends on June 30th of next year, 2025. For me, I like being able to take leadership from competent people. A budget should come from a former teacher. Basically, to be a superintendent and you're covering multiple schools. I'm a former teacher that is currently a teacher, but a former public school teacher. And basically, there were many times in public schools where we needed a budget for music. I've had to provide PA systems. I've had to use my own personal things. We have, it's kind of like we get commission for consolidating schools. It seems that superintendents can come in without ever teaching in the classroom, without being a principal, without having credentials in this area, and you're able to make choices and you're able to have a proposed budget for our county. However, I think that that choice or that leadership should come from somebody that truly, truly has invested in this county in regards to the budget for the one consolidated school, the elementary school. We've had three or four different amounts. You just mentioned $49 million at the combined joint commissioners meeting. We first started off saying that this would just be 31 million. Then that moved to 40. Then that moved to 42. Now we're at 49 million. So in regards to the accuracy and the level of competence and also with this old money that we've had in regards to the Board of Education, where we get no money in and we've already had money left over from the previous time. We haven't spent all of our money, but we keep requesting more. Hey commissioners, can you also give us this? I've been at every meeting and I've watched our superintendent do this. Also, in regards to consolidating New Tech, I myself had to mention three times, hey, remember, New Tech is supposed to be the alternative school. This just happened three weeks ago. It was supposed to happen last year. So the thing is, I don't trust the accuracy in regards to funding unless I hear from the state treasurer that I go to often for Region 27, which is this district. So Warren County Board of Education, also superintendent, please be more accurate with crunching numbers because things prove that it is an embezzlement issue. We shouldn't keep asking for more money if we've used our money intentionally and purposefully as well as competently. And outsiders cannot tell us what to do if they truly don't know what has happened with funds for the last 30 years, not three, not two, 30. So with that being said, please make sure that you do an accurate viewing of what is proposed by the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, it appears that that concludes any comments for our public hearing on the superintendent's proposed 2024-2025 budget. Any further comment from the board? Okay, hearing none then. We'll begin our opening meeting, I mean, opening of our regularly scheduled meeting. And we do have a quorum here today. Board member Byrd is not with us, but the rest of us are all here. So I would like to announce that we have established a quorum and I call the May 14th, 2024 regularly board meeting to order. At this time, if you so choose, please join us in a moment of silence. We have board chair comments announcements right now, and I have none. Do any other board members have something they'd like to share with the public?
I don't have any announcements. I would just like to say how much we appreciate it, meeting with the staff last year for Teacher Appreciation Week. We serve ice cream Sundays to all of the schools and we enjoyed the participation and we thank you for coming and conversating with us as well as enjoying your ice cream Sunday. So we look forward to doing some more of that, but thank you all for those who participated.
Thank you, Sims. And I also would just like to ditto that and say also that, I think it was nursing week two. So we truly appreciate all that our nurses do in the district as well as our teachers.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sutton, with your superintendent updates, next, please.
Thank you. Good evening. That's a good segue into my comments. Last week was in fact Teacher Appreciation Week, and so we are so thankful for our teachers who are dedicated to helping to prepare our students each and every day. They do everything from teaching core subjects to providing an extra snack when someone needs it. They give hugs when the student needs to feel some support, meeting and partnering with families to help their students succeed, collaborating with our teachers, going to professional development to make sure they're using the best practices for working with their students, and so much more. So we appreciate our teachers and we salute you. Wednesday of last week also was School Nurses Day. We've got some of the best school nurses, I think, around. And they help students also and their families manage chronic medical conditions, they help our students with their medical needs, and we all know that takes a very special person to be a nurse. And so we think, we think you have to be even more special to be a school nurse. And so thank you to all of our school nurses. And since our last board meeting, we also celebrated Principal's Appreciation Day. So last week was a busy week, just in celebrating and acknowledging the work of our staff and faculty. These men and women are responsible for making sure that everything goes on in our schools smoothly and successfully. Think about that for a minute, for making sure the door gets unlocked in the morning, the building is ready for students to arrive, staff working schedules, finances, communicating with family, and that's before students and staff even arrive at school. We've got some great principals working to make big things happen here in Warren County, and we're thankful for each and every one of you as well. So this is graduation season, and so starting this Friday, we're first to kick off our graduations. Twenty-two scholars will graduate from Warren Early College High School on this Friday at 6:00 PM here in the Warren County Middle School Gymnasium. Graduation is open to the public and no tickets are needed. I'm also proud to announce that all 22 of them are graduating with their high school diploma and their college associate's degree. Among those 22, we have six scholars finishing their fifth super senior year and 16 scholars who earned both in just four years. I'm also happy to show that 100% of the graduating class has been accepted to a college or a university. Speaking of which, these students participated in the VGCC graduation last week, so it's an exciting time for these young adults. Not far behind, Warren County High School's graduation will be held on Saturday, May 25th at 10:00 AM at the Warren County High School Gymnasium. Tickets are required to attend this graduation, and we'll tell you more about their graduating class at our next meeting. So as I said, this is a busy time of year for all of our schools. Every school has interview activities and celebrations planned, so check with their local school for dates and times. We love being able to celebrate all of our students and their hard work this school year. Before the school year is ended, we're already looking forward to next school year. Do you have a three, four, or five-year-old? And if you do, now is the time to get them registered for kindergarten or pre-K. All you have to do is go to the elementary school closest to your home and they'll help you to enroll your child. For kindergarten, your child must be five years old before August 31st. And for pre-K, they have to be four years old by August 31st. We have a list of the documents you'll need on our website, so if you just go to www.warnk12nc.org/enroll. Again, that's www.warnk12nc.org/ enroll for more information. As always, end up with little information about our radio show, Learn More at Warren County Schools, will be live on WARR 1520 AM and 105.3 FM next Thursday from noon to 12:30. We hope you can listen in on the radio, stream it online from the radio station's website, or watch us live on the Warren County Schools Facebook page.
Hopefully, we're getting all the rain now that'll sure a dry graduation. I would now like to call for approval of the May 14th, 2024 regular board meeting agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the May 14th, 2024 regular board meeting agenda.
Second. So I have a motion by Board Member Tally Brain and a second by Vice Chair Sims that we approve the May 14th, 2024 regular board meeting agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote? As well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
That motion carries. Now we'll have public comments for our regularly scheduled board meeting. And first on that list is Ronaldo Espinoza. Good evening, Ms. Espinoza.
My name is Ronaldo Espinoza. I sent everybody what I sent Mr. Keith Thornton about some financing and everything. I appreciate, Ms. Sims, thank you for responding. That's a good one. I was at the budget with the commissioners. Before that, see this right here, the water coming down? That's unacceptable. You had the money, what you did with it? I'm not stopping. I'm gonna keep on asking about it. But every time I send you a letter, I'm sending it to someplace else too. It's gonna happen. It's gonna happen because to me, that's unacceptable. You're talking about children. I'm sitting right down here, the young lady passed the water all around top of her, man. I'm like, it should not ever happen. Look at this. What happened with that money? What hap, where's the money's been going? It's a problem. I went to the commissioners meeting and Keith Thornton was talking about getting money from the commissioners. I wish you'd go online and see what the conversation was about. And that made me go and look at resume. I'm very unpleased with that. We talk about leadership. Leadership. I remember when I went for, to pass the test, I couldn't pass it because I didn't have enough points to pass it. You know what it says? I gotta work harder. I was done, I went, I started working harder to get it. But when you put the children in your hands, you have to be qualified. You have to be qualified. That's, that's wrong. That's wrong. I've been talking to a lot of people and you talk about the school, new school? You got school. You got school that you guys can go invest your money, is how you do it. Talk to the citizen. Have a meeting with the city and the school board. Talk to the citizen. They're the ones that vote you in office. They rely to what you have, what you guys bring on the table. Start talking to them. You wanna build a new school? We losing kids. Go to Henderson, we losing teacher. What is the problem? Fix the problem. Fix it. Because or not, we're gonna have, like I said, I will talk about it, I'm not gonna stop. I'm not gonna stop. But go online and find out about the school when someone went over there and asked for the money. Please, go. I would appreciate it. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Next is Siobhan Russell Jones.
So Warren County, of course, the universal language, and I keep telling you all the way to get through to the students, the way to get your students that might be below grade level, a few grade levels above it, that beautiful mechanism that I use at my specialty school is called the universal language of what? Music! For you that went to church on Sunday, you just experienced this. For you all that go and turn on your radio when you leave the parking lot, you experienced this. You go into a different mood, correct? So that's what I'm gonna ignite. I'm gonna use the power of music because it's always so tense, and that's what happens when you're using the government, using the system. It's tense, isn't it, district workers? Isn't it? Board of Education? Isn't it? Preachers? Superintendent? It's very intense to have to keep up with a group of lies that falsely indoctrinate citizens permanently. It's intense to do that kind of work that actually doesn't give you anything but an extra amount of money. So I chose to actually choose favor over a dollar, believe it or not. And I've agreed and everything. I even actually have so much education that I decided to create a school in my county for children that actually are advanced or longing to be grade levels up instead of just on grade levels or below it. So Warren County, I'll sing this for you like I did last year in May. How's your mental? Warren County, how's your mental? Board of Education, how's your mental? Superintendent, how's your mental? Parent and teachers, how's your mental? How's your mental? Let me let you know how my mental was. About a month ago, I got a call because I am a parent teacher student organization, and one of my friends told me to collect this statement from her son. I had an altercation with a basketball player in our classroom. They escorted me to the counselor room when multiple teachers were called. Coach Miles came in the room and started putting his hands on me. He pushed me to the wall and chucked me with his arm. I then also- Oh, okay. Well, that's fine. I will say the rest of the names anonymously. Thank you. I was standing on the hallway, this came from a teacher that witnessed this incident. I was standing on the hallway outside of the guidance office. I looked into the room and saw Studdett standing at the back of the office pacing while a teacher and another teacher talked with him. I walked on the hallway to assist calming the other students down, and then I walked back to the guidance office approximately two minutes later. I could see through the window when this coach pinned up the student against the wall. The student was facing the wall and this coach was standing behind him, using his entire body to hold the student against the wall. The student's face was against the wall-
And he could not move. Warren County Public Schools, our mental is not well. Our social, emotional learning strategies are not helping. And the teacher, we don't know if he's in the parent administrative league, administrative-
Ms. Russell, can you wrap it up? Can you, is that-
So with that being said, Warren County, please mentally do what you say we're gonna do by having socially, emotionally learning so that children are not harmed and so that teachers don't have to lose jobs for not being trained in personal-
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Please correct us. We look crazy as always. Lawsuits will happen soon. People are not as uneducated as you think.
Moving right along, E. Jones. Good evening, Amari. Good evening.
I just wanna, I wanna speak on what I witnessed at the past basketball games at the high school and the middle school also. I remember there was this ransom game going on here and we were all sitting around watching the game, of course. And there was this little stunt and everybody just started shouting. So I go and I look and I see there's this girl, she looked like at least 12, and she said she went there. And that was in the boy bathroom, and somebody, she said, bugged her to go in there, and she went in there, and she was like watching the, I'm not gonna say her name, but I was like, what? And I just wanna say, y'all should like focus more on fine arts, like painting, mental health, painting, music, et cetera, like that. And there should just be better education in our school, in Warren County in general. You know, they're sort of like more advanced kids, they still have to say, let's say a third grader's on the fifth grader level, they're still gonna have to stay in the third grade. Like, I'm 10 and I just graduated sixth grade, I'm in seventh grade now, and have, actually advanced, advanced kids. They're all from Warren County, and more than half of them go to Henderson Collegiate. And Henderson Collegiate is like, is college board, as y'all know. But I just think y'all should probably have like a better education system here, and also have like, instead of once a month, I should have more mental health days. And instead of, I'm not gonna say still, but instead of like borrowing, I was gonna say that, borrowing, my school, my homeschool program ideas, I want to try to just partner, just partner. Instead of, once we started talking about the corner, and the timeout, instead of timeout, less than mental health day came up. Once I started telling them about like, it's just the little things also. Like, I remember my mom, she missed speaking here one day, because I used to go to her side too. She was speaking one day and her time was like, she had a few seconds left, and she was wrapping it up. And as soon as it hit zero, she was walking like, somebody said something to her. And all of a sudden, there was an officer, and she was right there, but she left, I guess. But my mom was leaving and she was recording as she was walking out of the building. And the officer right behind her was like all around her car and stuff. And I was in the car, I was like, what is she doing, walking around my car? But I just wanna say, Warren County Schools, they could do better. They could really truly use more, like liabilities, I guess you could say. They could do better.
Thank you.
I didn't realize we weren't live streaming because of the weather, it's being recorded. So maybe people might ignore it because I just got two texts saying people trying to get on, but it's not being live streamed, it's only recorded because of the weather. I just asked for it.
So it'll be on, so they can get it on the website once it's recorded? Will it be on the website once it's recorded? Okay, it'll be posted on YouTube. Okay, it's been brought to my attention that because of the weather, we're having problems with the live streaming, so it's my understanding that it is being recorded and the meeting in its entirety will be posted on YouTube tomorrow. We apologize for the inconvenience. All right, thank you for all those public comments, and we will now begin with our action items. The first one is custodial supplies, as presented by Dr. Carrington.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Sutton, school board members and all those in attendance. I accompany you tonight with an action item for custodial supplies. In an effort to improve the cleaning and maintenance of our facilities, we have completed an assessment of the necessary equipment and supplies needed in each building here in Warren County Schools. Additional cleaning equipment and materials are needed to support these needs. This list includes such as buffers, scrubbers, water, extraction machines, and other items to properly clean and maintain floors throughout our schools. Capital funding is available for this purchase and we are seeking board approval tonight.
Any questions by the board? Okay, if there are no questions, then I would like to entertain a motion to approve the request for custodial supplies.
You might add pursuant to a purchase contract approved by the board attorney and superintendent.
Okay, so it's-
The purchase contract is, has been completed. Yes, so yes, it is done.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the custodial supplies pursuant to approval of precious contract with the attorney and superintendent.
I second. So we have a motion to approve the custodial supplies per the contract created between the, our attorney and superintendent by Vice Chair Sims and a second by, that was you, Ms. Tally Brain? Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote? As well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Carrington. Next on the agenda is the EC Service Amendment Agreement.
Mr. Sayer, would you introduce yourself to the board? I think this is your first time coming before the board, so some of them may not know you. My name is Blitham Desayer. I am the new EC Director and AIG Coordinator. So tonight, I'm proposing a contract amendment for one of our contract speech therapists, Ms. Christine Saunders. This proposal is to increase the contract value by $12,500 in order to cover speech services evaluations and meetings for students in her caseload until the end of June 2024. The original contract value is $95,000. With the amendment, it will increase to $107,500. With the amendment, it will increase to $107,500. The reasons for this increase in service hours by Ms. Saunders include providing extended school year to speech, um, to provide speech services to five preschool students during the summer of July 2023. Um, she provided 45 sessions, 20 minutes each. Okay, so this is, um, approved during the IEP team meeting because the team felt that, um, it would harm the students' progress if they don't get the services over the summer. Okay? And, um, Ms. Saunders also was the case manager for initial referral meetings during the summer, um, for students referred. Okay, and so, you know, you, once we get those referrals, the 90-day timeline begins. And so, over the summer, even if we get those three-year-old referrals from CDSA and parent referrals, we have to continue the work and place those students. So she did the evaluations, meetings, and paperwork. Also, this year was the first year pre-K had universal speech and hearing screening. And Ms. Saunders screened 24 students from Marion Boyd, 36 students from Soul City Head Start, and eight students from Hollowasaponi. And, um, and these are the reasons why, um, I am proposing for a contract amendment for Ms. Saunders. Any questions?
So I have a question. Thank you for sharing. Talk to us a little bit about what universal speech is. What do you guys specifically do with that program?
So what, what pre-K did was they screened all students that are, um, register, that, that registered for pre-K.
Okay.
So it used to be what they did was they were looking for the, um, for the health form coming from the community and then if there are concerns about speech, that's when the speech therapists would screen them. However, with, you know, this year, what they did was every student that registered for pre-K, they did the screening so that they wouldn't miss anybody.
Right.
Yes.
Gotcha, gotcha. How many speech therapists do we have currently here?
So currently, we have, um, we have three con, um, contract speech and one employed. And at the beginning of the year, we have, um, one, um, one speech therapy assistant.
Assistant?
Yes. But she left, you know, in the middle of the school year.
Okay. So three-
Three, um, three speech therapists.
And one-
Three contracts, I'm sorry, three contracts, speech therapists and one employee.
Employee. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is for, uh, this is across the board with our exceptionalities, just not speech only? The, for the additional-
12,000.
Yes. So all the students in her caseload, um, will be serviced by her.
And it's through the summer? It's gonna, this is a, she's gonna be doing, this is for Christine, so she's out, one employee?
She is one, one speech therapist, yes, ma'am.
And this is gonna be through summer school? This is, they have three-
Until June 2024, until the end of this, um, school year.
Okay, okay.
I can see it's on there.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Uh, did you, I, I know you said this, but I'm just writing. So you said 45, you said something about 45 minutes for each or 40, what was that?
That was for the extended school year. Um, so basically, um, there were, um, it was 45 sessions for 20 minutes each, yes, ma'am.
So 45 sessions, what, how many minutes?
20 minutes each.
Gotcha.
Okay. If all questions have been entertained, then I'd like to call for a motion to approve the EC, where is it? Um, the EC Contract Amendment.
So Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the EC Service Amendment Contract.
Second. So I have a motion by Board Member Brain and a second by Board Member Long that we approve the EC Service Amendment Agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote as well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome, in your new position. Not welcome, but welcome in your new position.
Yeah, in a new position.
Thank you. All right. All right, next we have the 2024-2025 Elementary and Secondary Instructional Calendars. Ms. Clayton, I'm a, oh, no, it's, sorry. I was, we're gonna have to write it down here.
She played by Ms. Mallard.
Sorry, we just were, went over it all with her, so.
That's all right. We're gonna start out with the feedback since we have been asking for-
This is Ms. Mallard, sorry, not Ms. Clayton.
Yes. Heather Mallard, Chief Communication and Engagement Officer for Warren County Schools. Good evening, you all.
Good evening.
We did want to start out by providing you feedback with what, uh, the community feedback they gave us about the information that we posted online. Perfect. So here's a look back at the, um, sorry, not the budget. This one is about the school calendar. The timeline, if you recall, April 10th is when we released the original school calendar drafts. And we were thrilled that by April 24th, we had already received 256 feedback entries online. April 25th, we released the revised school calendar drafts in feedback form. And we did add a question when we revised the calendars. We added a question if people think that the Warren County Middle School should be on the elementary or secondary calendar. So they were able to provide specific feedback on that one topic in addition to the open-ended questions that we had previously had. And since April 25th, we have received 73 additional feedback entries online. So here's a look at the breakdown to that important question about, would you prefer that Warren County Middle School be on the elementary calendar or on the secondary calendar? That top line there is the total response. And 43% of respondents preferred Warren County Middle School to be on the elementary calendar. And then 57% preferred that it be on the secondary or the high school calendar. And you can see the breakdown there by who was responding. Um, students favored a little more elementary school by one. Parents favored the secondary calendar by, uh, quite a bit more. Um, teachers were pretty close and, uh, preferred the elementary calendar, but that was a late entry, um, because it had been split 50-50 when I had checked it last week. Uh, other staff are favoring the secondary calendar and community members are favoring the secondary calendar. Here's some of the common feedback. We did have open-ended questions. Just what feedback would you like to provide with us? So some of the common things that we heard, some of the themes. Um, I was thrilled to see that, um, reading through them, 85 people described that they really liked the calendars. And there you can see the breakdown of how that, um, broke down. And then also, 28 people mentioned that they really liked having that common spring break among all the schools and the holidays and how that made it easier for their family. And again, you can see how that breaks down and it makes sense that you would have more parents that had provided that feedback since they were talking about how it impacted their family. Some other feedback, we saw a lot of people commenting that March is just too early for spring break. It's not even spring yet. Um, that was from 53 responses. And again, they may have said it in different ways, but that was kind of the common theme. Um, we also saw that school shouldn't start until late August. So some folks were not crazy about that early to mid-August start date for the secondary calendars. We saw that in 21 responses. And I thought this was really interesting in 35 responses. Again, they said it in different ways, but there were quite a lot of people that mentioned they wish we could have all of the schools on the same calendar. Um, some that maybe don't have any interaction with the early college high school were willing to throw them out and say, I can understand if they need to be a little bit different, but can't the rest of us all be the same? Um, and then there were even some that had mentioned that they could love to see maybe a year-round calendar and maybe that'd make it easier to get everybody on the same calendar. One other thing, several people mentioned that they had concerns about Warren County Middle School being on the elementary calendar because the middle school students typically ride the high school buses with the high school students. So, once we got that feedback several times, we called and talked to Transportation. And this is information from our Transportation Department. Um, Warren County Middle School does ride the same buses as our high schools. And what they realized this year is that when the middle school is on a different schedule than the high schools, the buses then have to run twice as many routes, which doubles the transportation cost for the day because that is extra fuel for them to run the route again and salaries and time that they're having to pay the staff. So our Transportation Department estimates that we would save between $20,000 and $30,000 a year if we keep the middle school and the high schools on the same calendar. So having-
That is interesting.
Discovered that information, we did wanna make sure we pass that along to you as well to be part of the discussion tonight. Any questions about the feedback? All right, now we're gonna get to the real star of the show. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mallard. As you can see, that, um, Ms. Mallard has done a fantastic job with the surveys and given you the, um, survey results. And I just wanted to, um, touch on a couple of topics that she talked about. One thing is the spring break. And yes, the spring break is early in, in March. It's the week of March, the 10th through the 14th. However, when you look at April, then they get a little mini-spring break.
That's right.
Because that Wellness Thursday, it's half-day PD for the staff and then the afternoon is their wellness afternoon. And the kids are out and have Good Friday off, Saturday, Easter, and then annual leave on Easter Monday. So the staff has four and a half days and the students have five days. So they have the spring break, yes, in Ma, March, but then they get a little mini-break over in, um, April. Um, there are several positives for the middle school to be on the, um, secondary calendar with Warren County High School and Warren Early College High School. We have heard some of those in the past. And then tonight, Ms. Mallard brought forth the information from Transportation that there would be a tremendous proposed savings for the, um, Warren County Middle School to be on the secondary calendar for Warren County High School and Warren Early College High School. Um, are there any other questions from, for me at this moment?
I think you guys did a good job with the research. I appreciate Mallard and you've also given us the, um, the data. I think it's just interesting that, um, I would have really thought most of the, um, at least parents would have wanted the school calendar linked with the elementary versus the middle and high together. But it seems like the numbers speak and they're wanting it to be the count, the, the middle school and high school secondary together. And we get a cost savings too, so that's a bit major plus.
That, that is.
Yeah.
So after hearing the comments from the surveys, the, um, recommendation is for Warren County Middle School to be on the secondary calendar with Warren County High School and Warren Early College High School and that the elementary calendar be for Marion Boyd, Northside, and Vaughan Elementary.
Real quickly, and so just point of clarification. And then, I know you've shared these calendars with us, so we will have the mini little break, we will have the early spring break in March, correct?
Correct.
And then we will have the, um, mini little break for Easter.
Right, for everybody.
For everybody.
Everybody will have the same spring break and the same mini-break, yes, ma'am.
Gotcha, okay.
So was there a, uh, opportunity or did, did you all have like schools to vote? Cause I saw in the, in the information that we got from, um, Mallard, uh, I think she sent us the report of the, of the survey. And I saw several comments saying my schools voted to have this, to have the spring break later.
Later. I know the surveys were sent out to everyone and everybody had the opportunity to participate in the survey. Now, Ms. Mallard might can shed a little more light on that.
It's my understanding that, um, as the Calendar Committee was meeting to discuss some of the options and ideas as they were crafting their calendar, that some schools, like at a staff meeting or something like that, may have discussed different possibilities. And they discussed it as a staff and then asked their, um, representative to the Calendar Committee to take that information to the Calendar Committee. So I believe when they talked about their school or their staff voted, I believe it was that to, to tell their representative to the Calendar Committee, this is what we prefer.
Okay, okay, okay.
And I did, I, I appreciate you bringing that up. I also wanted to make sure that all of the public realizes that what we presented tonight were really just the highlights of the survey, but we did share each and every response with all of the board members so that you all could read them for yourselves instead of a summary.
Yeah.
And so I don't want them to think that, um-
No, we got them.
That, that you all didn't see it. I know you did.
We got them, ma'am.
And I wanna thank you for doing the survey because as we heard in public comment, there's, there is a charge on the part of the board to listen to our constituents. And surveys are an excellent way to hear from our, from not just our, I mean, students, parents, everything. Uh, and it's a very formal way of collecting data, which is really important for us to then make informed decisions. So sometimes I think when you're given a survey or the opportunity to fill out a survey, you don't think it makes any difference and so therefore you don't do it. And I think the more participation that we can get in these kinds of things will really help us as board members to make informed decisions that do reflect what it is, um, those people that we elected to serve, um, wish. So thank you for giving our constituents that opportunity.
Yeah.
I would just like, um, in our, in our meeting, we had, uh, Ms. Superintendent Sutton talked about, uh, when we were talking about the calendar, the staff. And so could you kinda give us what you heard from the middle school staff? As far as, and I think that the perception is that they're, they're coming back too early, so they're missing out on summer vacation?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So they're missing-
They start early time.
Yeah, I think Ms. Clayton touched on a little bit in terms of the, the spring break, uh, and that there were some responses of feeling that, hey, I'm losing three weeks of my summer vacation. Uh, and you're not really losing three weeks of your summer vacation because your vacation also starts three weeks earlier. So the length of the vacation is the same time. You're not losing any time. It's just shifting of when it starts and when it ends is, is a little bit different. But I think some, we saw some responses that expressed the fact that they were losing three weeks of their summer vacation.
Yeah, especially a lot of the middle school staff.
Yeah.
Which, last year, when Warren County High School came back early, so they came back earlier this school year. So they had the same feeling that they were losing, but then they get out earlier. So it's-
Balanced.
You lose it on one end and you gain it on the other end. So it becomes a wash.
Yeah. So yeah, I just wanted that to be stated cause I've heard, you know, other than the spring break being too early, I've heard a lot of the middle school staff saying, you know, we were taking, taking part of their summer vacation. But like I said, now you would get out to three weeks earlier also.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and of course, you know, it's mentioned, I think it's here, you know, we base this on instruction hours. And so students still attend the same number of days.
Right.
Same number of hours. Teachers and staff book the same number of days.
Right.
So there's no shift. Again, it's just, you get out earlier, you know, and then come in, or come in later, or get out later, come in earlier. So it balances out in a, in a wash, so to speak.
So can you be clear on your recommendation to us as the board before we vote?
The recommendation is that Warren County Middle School be on the secondary calendar with Warren County High School and Warren Early College High School. And that the elementary calendar be Marion Boyd, Northside, and Vaughan Elementary Schools.
Okay, so the calendar that we have here, just so I'm clear.
The calendar that you have before you has Warren County Middle School on that draft and it would not be on that elementary draft. It would be on the other draft that has, um, secondary, Warren County Middle School.
So we're not voting on the one that is presented here?
Correct. You're voting on the recommendation, correct, yes.
Yeah.
But it would be posted correctly.
Okay. Any further discussion? I think it's clear. So if there's no further discussion, then I would like to have a motion for, to approve the 2024-2025 Elementary and Secondary Instructional Calendars as presented and recommended.
So Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the 2024-2025 elementary and secondary instructional calendars as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Tally Graham and a second by Board Member Wong that we approve the 2024-2025 elementary and secondary instructional calendars as recommended. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say one thing, Victoria. You know, as I made the motion, in my mind, it was just triggering, because I'm not totally in support of it. However, it just goes to show that when we hear from the community, our staff, our students, that hopefully they see that we as a board value what their voice speaks. Because, you know, I would have done a little bit differently than this, but I can support it, because this is what the majority of our survey, the outcome of the survey, so we have to support what our voices have stated. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, and that's why it's clear, including the word recommended.
Yeah, that's right, so.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, then may we vote? As well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you.
I know that was a long road. Okay. Next, we have the 2024-2025 proposed superintendent's budget. I'm not even going to say Jeremy Teeter. Get it wrong, I'll wait for the first motion of someone. Thank you for moving, Ms. Mallard.
So in my previous life, I was a reporter, and I think you'll be able to tell by station, we used to joke around that sometimes you get Heather on the ones.
I love it.
Just like this meeting. Here's some feedback from the superintendent's proposed budget, the 24-25 feedback. One of the first questions we asked is, do you agree, strongly agree, neither agree nor disagree, disagree or strongly disagree with the superintendent's proposed budget? And these are the results. That top line there is the totals. Also want to mention, we got 21 responses to this survey. So not quite as many people seem to be interested in the budget as were in the school calendar. I guess it didn't impact spring break. But we have 11 people either agreed or strongly agreed, four people neither agreed nor disagreed, and then six disagreed or strongly disagreed. Again, we also showed you how that breaks down by group. You see the parents, the teachers, other staff, and residents. And the residents, we did specifically mention that they're residents of Warren County, but they do not have a student in Warren County Public Schools, and they are not employed by Warren County Public Schools. Some of the common themes that we found in this feedback, again, open-ended questions. We saw that people really supported the funding for the athletic facility improvements. Four people mentioned that. Two people mentioned that they really liked that the budget included facility repairs. And then two more mentioned that they liked that it included a raise for certified and classified staff. The dislikes, five people mentioned that they were concerned about staff cuts. Four people were very clear that they wanted more details of the budget so that they could better understand it. And then two people mentioned that they disliked that the budget included funding for athletic facility improvements. I think that's all we got for this one. There were only 21, so all the other items, only one person mentioned it, so we didn't include it in a slide, because that would get long. But again, we are sharing that full survey feedback with board members, so that you can read each and every comment.
And so quick question, this survey was put out so that everybody could have access on the website.
Right.
And we are clear that only 21 people responded.
Right.
Okay.
And we posted it on our social media channels. We also sent out a text message that reminded folks about
Yep.
surveys that were still open. And after doing that push, we did see a bump in the school calendar feedback results, so that we know people received it and acted on it.
Right.
Just not as many people acted on the budget.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, good to see you all. This poor microphone's up and down tonight. So we, so I think I would be remiss if I did not make a few open-ended comments about some things I've heard this evening, just by way of public comment and by written comment.
I appreciate that.
I've been doing this for a long time, and I just, I'm very, I always kind of take great pause.
Excuse me, can you stop and introduce yourself and who are you? I'm sorry.
Certainly, absolutely, yes. I'm just spoiled to just being y'all. Jeremy Teeter, I am your finance consultant through your relationship with School Operations Specialists. Have, over time, evolved into a crusty, aging finance officer. And have served a variety of districts, small, rural, large, urban, in primarily the Piedmont through the eastern half of North Carolina, as a sitting finance officer and as a consultant. So had the privilege of being connected to your books since about June 27th of last year. So came on board to close out your fiscal year last year and have been supporting your finance staff and other folks through this exceptionally crazy year statewide. So, and so I'll just say, right, I always kind of take, I heard the fraud word, the embezzlement word, right, the misuse word. And I, and so I just, you know, I just want to, you know, those are very strong words, you know, in a public forum. And I think a lot of times, they are driven from a place of, I don't understand it.
Right.
And so I'm going to
Right.
say, okay, it's misuse, or there's something missing to the puzzle. If I don't understand it, then it's got to be wrong. And so, and we see this pop up, it happens in every community, I think, where people express, kind of, they use that word, choice.
Right.
Sometimes we hear it from other elected officials, sometimes it's citizenry. And I will say, right, so schools, and you have the misfortune of school system funding is some of the most complex funding that there is. And it has only gotten more complex since I have been involved in it. And I feel very badly for anybody who is new, who's trying to learn it now, versus when I first learned it, and it has just sort of grown up around me. And so that's a big part of why there is a finance officer shortage. And that's a big part of why you're struggling to find one, right? You're one of several that have not been able to find one, and, because it's hard. It's very hard. And I spend a lot of time trying to break things down for the typical consumer of information to understand it. And, you know, over the past few board meetings, you know, we've worked very hard to craft presentations to help the board to understand it in layman terms, and to anybody who was in any of the meetings to understand. And I think the thing that's particularly interesting for me, as, you know, I'm an outsider, but I'm not, right, with Warren County. And so the folks who need to hear the information the most have missed several opportunities to see the detailed information, because they've not been in the room.
Right.
You know, so comments are said, folks are gone, and then we're going through the details that they're craving. And so I feel like there's some disconnect there. So I just feel like I'd be remiss if I just didn't address kind of that quandary for Warren County.
Thank you for that.
And so I know, so I think, so at the last, at the last meeting, we went through sort of a resolution document, right? So on a couple of occasions, the board has gone through a detailed presentation of just where is the board, where are you heading, what are your needs for next year? And then at your last meeting, we boiled that down to our best staff at a resolution format for next year. We know that the General Assembly is still, the short session was starting up not long after I saw you last, a couple of weeks ago. We don't have a tremendous amount of insight right now in terms of, are they going to modify anything where compensation is concerned compared to what we already know in year two of the existing budget? It sounds like a lot of, I'm hearing lots of description of one-time budget surplus that is likely to go towards maybe some one-time things, right? And not something recurring. So the governor has a very aggressive request, as he should, and, you know, I doubt it will materialize to the level that he's seeking. But, so I think those are things that we're hearing in the headlines. And so the state, the state portion of this document kind of reflects some things that we have talked about. We are anticipating a 3% increase. And so, and that's likely the salary increases the folks are referencing in the survey, right? It's, you know, 3% for your classified and your certified folks. We're anticipating a pretty tremendous increase in the cost of health insurance. And so that is really sort of driving this number that we arrived at for your state, the state portion of your budget. In the, in the local portion of the budget, so that's addressed in Sections 3 and 4 of this document, you know, it just says as a reminder for things that we've discussed, this is the space in which we are not seeking additional county funding, right? So it's in the capital section
Right.
that we're seeking that additional county funding. And as a reminder for the public, so some of the reasons that the board sort of landed in that direction is you do have capital needs that you've been addressing in local, that you can address in capital moving forward, and sort of reorganize things. And then also, if you've got an increase in capital versus your local, you're not required to share that portion with charters, right?
Right.
So just trying to be strategic. We know, you know, we sort of, we feel, we feel sort of the county side of the coin, you know, their finances are complicated as well. There's not necessarily the amount there to work with perhaps that we would hope. So we're being mindful and being as strategic as we can with what we're asking from them. And so we have, in the local fund and in your Fund VII that we referenced later in the document, we have inserted a fund balance figure for both of those funds to reflect what we're asking. So you can see on the screen for your local fund, $700,427 is reflected in terms of fund balance usage. And so to circle back to all of the conversations we've had, one of the strategies that the district has deployed this year is to leverage your ESER dollars to assist with some operating expenses. And then that's creating a situation where in the current year, you're adding a sizable amount of money in excess of a million dollars to your safety net or your fund balance to have, to help smooth out your landing into the next year. In tandem with that, you know, we have worked to identify things that can be tightened up in terms of your staffing, right? So everyone's sort of got that acknowledgement of, you know, ESER-level staffing cannot happen. You know, so we have had an opportunity to review teacher-to-student ratios, your teacher-assistant-to-student ratios. And so I know that your personnel team, along with Mr. Sutton, is processing that and trying to figure out a way to make that happen without disrupting livelihood, right? And so I think that's, so every district that I've worked with, we've tried to manage in a way that doesn't create a disruption of livelihood. Strategic about it, it might mean moving some pieces around. We've got vacancies here, too much there. How can we move people around to make it work? So I know that they're being very diligent about that. And the goal is not for you to be a major headline like some of the other places have been, making very dramatic reductions in force and creating lots of sensations. So it's been a very strategic, surgical approach to ease into where you need to be. So normally, I growl about having to budget fund balance, but in this case, we're being very strategic in that we're adding to it now to lean on for one year to soften the landing as the district
Right.
transitions off of its current situation. So then, moving into the federal fund, right, this is where we're all feeling it. You know, so ESER is winding down. That created a spike in everyone's federal resources for the past few years. And so we're working diligently to ease the district out of that, knowing that that funding is going away. So you'll return sort of to your normal, your normal level of federal funds that come from Title I, your idea funds that support EC. So those will be your two large, you've got several other federal programs, but we're going to go back to those being the two large federal programs that you have. On the capital outlay side of the House, so in looking at Sections 7 and 8, again, so this is the space where we're seeing that sort of increase in requests from the county, right, to support, to support various projects. We do, the state revenue that you see reflected there is our best estimate for what the balance of your needs-based grant is going to be going into the new year. And so I know that there's still, you know, conversations happening around the consolidation project. So to have normally large capital outlay budget, normally you would not see one that large in Warren County, but that's just reflective that you've got a major project that is in progress. And again, that's the space where we're seeking a little more money from the county for their support. We're continuing to honor, I think we're still, as of today, getting requests for more details from the interim county manager. And so we're moving as quickly as we can to provide her the additional details, so that everyone feels comfortable with their request. And I think moving farther down, your child nutrition fund is the most stable of the things, right? They have been profitable, standing on their own two feet. They will remain in that condition into the new school year. So we are, we are planning for them to absorb the impact of the raises, you know, so their employees will benefit from the state raises. Any benefit changes, they will, they will take care of those. And your only obligation to that program for the upcoming school year will remain the annual $45,000 match that the state requires you to do. So that will remain your only commitment to them moving into the new year. So that's good news. And then the final section is, is your, we call it many things. Some places call it restricted grant fund, other restricted fund, Fund VII in Warren County. And so this is another space. It behaves, the money does not come from local, but it behaves a lot like local in terms of your flexibility. You have some resources in here that are restricted for specific purposes, like NC pre-K. And you have some things in here that are unrestricted, that come from a variety of sources. So this is the other spot in the budget where we have a fund balance plug to make things work heading into the new year and to ease that transition. And then the goal for the following year is that the district will have continued to work through what needs to be done and be at a place to where we can back off of that, that need to have that figure plugged in. So that's sort of where we are in a high-level view. I know we are seeking specifically this evening, right, seeking your formal authorization to make the ask that is in Section 14 of the resolution, right? So specifically seeking $5,384,331 in the local appropriation and $500,000 from the county specifically for capital outlay. And then I think they're somewhat aware of, right, this is what it's going to be, so it's not a surprise. But kind of going through the formal housekeeping tonight of you authorizing that formal request.
I have one question, Jeremy.
Yes, ma'am.
In the, can you scroll back down, scroll back up, I guess, for the child nutrition?
Yes, ma'am.
And that area, it's 1.6 somewhere, I think. So what exactly can that be used for? Is that something that they could do with salaries in that department? Or is that only food? What is it?
Yes, it is specific to the operation of the child nutrition program. Yes, it is specific to the operation of the child nutrition program, right? So, that does pay for their staff and their benefits. It pays for the food, any processing supplies that they need. And then, they are, because of their status and their profitability, we're, we're able to, we're able to, and we do assess them for indirect costs for the things that we provide them, right? So, they're, they're using your utilities, for example, to operate that program. And so, they do contribute indirect costs to your local funds. But they're totally self-sufficient, which is great.
So, as we talk about salary compressions, that's, that's the area?
I mean, that is a space, right? And we could, you know, if administration, you know, were to ask us to look at that, if there were some particular concerns, we could look at some feasibility or some sustainability of what they could do within their own funds, for sure. But ideally, any changes in salary in that area would stay confined, right, to their own means so that you're not subsidizing them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank you for speaking to the public comment. I appreciate that.
Very much.
As well as, I can speak from experience in terms of understanding in layman's terms. You've done a really good job of helping me understand budget, because it is very complex. And I just wanted to let the public know that the fourth Thursday of every month, we have our finance committee meetings that are open meetings, and if someone has questions, I mean, what to, just watch, it's not there for a question and answer period. But thank you for helping me better understand the budget, because it is complex. I'm a teacher, I was waiting for my check.
Right.
You know? Okay. If there's no further discussion, then let me put my glasses on. I would like to entertain a motion to, for the board to approve the 2024-2025 proposed superintendent's budget.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the superintendent's proposed 2024-2025 budget.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Vice Chair Sims and a second by Board Member Tally Brane that the board approves the 2024-2025 proposed superintendent's budget. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote? As well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Okay. Our last action item is the HVAC unit for Warren County-
Just given one.
Oh, say I just crossed out that wrong one out. I'm sorry, thank you. Fall policy 2023 update, first reading.
Good evening, everyone. So, we conducted first reads, the World of Education Policy Committee as well as Executive Cabinet, so we are asking for approval of first read with the intent of bringing this back for full approval for second read. So, that's what we're bringing before you all on tonight. Are there any questions?
We're here again. Any questions, comments, discussion from the board? We have been over this with a fine-tooth comb, just so the public understands-
Yes.
-in committee meeting. So, with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion for the fall policy 2023 update first read, approval.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the fall policy 2023 update first reading.
Second.
So, I have a motion from Board Member Tally Brane and a second by Board Member Long that the board approves the fall policy 2023 update first read. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote? As well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. All right, now, our HVAC unit, Warren County High School, Dr. Carrington, I'm assuming.
Yes, it's me.
I'm going to get you all to write who's going to come up here next time, so I don't get embarrassed.
Good evening again to everyone. I come to you tonight regarding HVAC unit for Warren County High School. I came to you before on March 26th, but tonight I'm coming again with a new contract for an increase of $7,089, with the total now being $140,536. Would like to inform you that I did solicit bids from various vendors, and this is the lowest responsive, responsible bid. And this is our action item, as well as pending review of contract from Board Attorney and Superintendent Sutton.
Any further questions, discussion? You sure? Okay, hearing none, then, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the request HVAC unit for Warren County High School.
I wish they went to a new contract.
Madam Chair. So moved. I have a second. So, I have a motion by Board Member Long, a second by Board Member Tally Brane that we approve the HVAC unit for Warren County High School pending contract approval by our attorney and Mr. Sutton.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote? As well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Carrington.
You're welcome.
All right. At this point, then, I'd like to entertain a motion to convene into closed session. Pursuing to, that is.
I don't see it.
Had come up yet. I've got it, do you have it?
Oh, at the bottom. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we convene into closed session pursuant to General Statute 14-318, dash eleven, I mean, point eleven, A1, A5, and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 115(c)(321), and to consult with the Board Attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to 143-318.11a3.
My second.
So, I have a motion by Vice Chair Sims and a second by Board Member Tally Brane that we convene into closed session for said statement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
May we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, so we'll shoot for 7:30 to convene into closed session.
Thank you. Okay, the board is now in open session and at this point I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the personnel report.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the personnel report.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Talley Bream and a second by Board Member Long that we approve the personnel report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. At this point then, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at this time.
Okay, I have the motion by Board Member Long and a second by Board Vice Chair Sims that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Meeting adjourned.[1798.29][1798.29](applause)